Six twenty-nine, so I gotta get started. Can you call, please? Mike Wicker?
Here.
James Farman?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Cindy Byatt-Tee?
Here.
Isaiah Girl?
Here.
Mary and Matthew?
Here.
I do have a question for you, please, for the board of the children.
In my diligence to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Do I motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
James and Mike, any questions?
Yes.
Hearing none, Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Do I motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of March eighteenth?
So moved.
All right. Mike and Isaiah.
I did it.
Okay, whatever. Any questions on it? Hearing none, Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Far?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Do I motion to approve the payroll accruals and disbursements as stated?
So moved.
Thank you, Gary and Mary Beth.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We'll get everybody for the audience.
Hearing none, Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Far?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. If we don't believe we have any public input, moving then on to district business. We have a very neat presentation tonight. Ms. Doll and her fourth and fifth grade students will be singing for us.
First of all, I have a pleasure just introducing this group tonight. I want to start by saying thank you parents for bringing the kids in tonight. I do appreciate it. This is our fourth and fifth grade choir, at least a portion of it. And one of the things we're doing in fifth grade, it's a choir, it's voluntary. And they practice on Wednesday mornings before school, so many of them get to school a little bit early on Wednesdays. They come up. Ms. Doll has been doing this a long time. And it's just brought a whole new piece to our music department at the elementary level. And I think when we watch at the middle high school and some of the things that our students are doing, I think we're setting the groundwork for that as they come up to this building. So I'm gonna stop talking and just go through the board and Ms. Doll and let her do her thing, so.
Thank you. They do, and some of them are there at seven thirty and tidying my room and waiting for everyone to get here. And some are only there for five minutes. So for all of them to get together and make such beautiful music, it's pretty amazing. And we do have thirty-one kiddos and we have about half of them here tonight. So first of all, I'm gonna give just a PowerPoint presentation. I quickly went through my emails to see what pictures I had. And so this gives you a little idea about what our music program is about at both schools. (Music) Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. My little ladies and gentlemen, come on down. Part one here and part two. Now, we're two weeks away from our program, so we have a little polishing to do, but they're in good shape. Why don't you scoot down and I'll be right in the middle here. We will have an accompanist as they get me. Scoot on down.
Which one should we do first, give us hope?
Yes.
Okay. Then I need my drawers over here. The piece I'm going to perform is called "Give Us Hope", and it is by the same composer that wrote that piece in the background, "Makes Me". He really is an advocate for music education, and that's what he wrote "Makes Me" specifically for, and the royalties go to support at music education. So, "Give Us Hope". Of all the feelings that a young person can have, there is one that makes life seem desolate, empty, and sometimes not even worth living. When it is not there, hope. Hope for the future. Hope to be loved. Hope to be heard. When children are without hope, they are robbed of one of the most defining parts of their childhood. We must never underestimate the power of giving hope to a child. Listen to the sound of my voice. Can you feel the beat of my heart? Listen to the questions I have. Listen to me. It's all very simple to see what we need. Give us hope, my voice is calling. Can you see? Look in my eyes. Can you feel? My hand is reaching. Give us hope and we'll show you the way. Listen to the sound of my voice is calling. Can you feel the beat of my heart pounding? Listen to the questions I have. Listen, listen to me. We are the future. Help us believe. Give us hope, my voice is calling. Can you see? Look in my eyes. Can you feel? My hand is reaching. Give us hope and we'll show you the way. Take my hand. Now look in my eyes. Tell me what you see. Give us hope, my voice is calling. Can you see? Look in my eyes. Can you feel? My hand is reaching. Give us hope and we'll show you the way. Give us hope, my voice is calling. Can you see? Look in my eyes. Can you feel? My hand is reaching. Give us hope and we'll show you the way. Show you the way, my voice is calling. Show you the way, my voice is calling. Show you the way. Okay, you guys, come on over. Where's my part two? Would you mind if you... All right. Gotta make sure I got the right one. I didn't have the right music this morning. Okay, this "Seize the Day" was inspired by, I went to Baraboo and with my daughter and grandsons, and we saw "Seize the Day", and it was so awesome. And Charlie saw it too. And so I thought, oh, this would be a good way to get the boys in. And we did get some, a nice group of boys. So this is "Seize the Day" from New Zees. And they have choreography that will come for our program, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, remember we go up and then strike, strike, strike. Okay. Here we go. Now is the time to seize the day.
Now is the time to seize the day.
Answer the call and don't delay.
Answer the call and don't delay.
Wrongs will be riding if we're united. Let us seize the day.
Now let him hear it loud and clear.
Like it or not, we're drawing here.
Like it or not, we're drawing here.
Proud and defiant, we'll slay the giant. Let us seize the day. Neighbor to neighbor, brother to son. One for all and all for one. Strike, 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 strike. Now is the time to seize the day.
Now is the time to seize the day.
Answer the call and don't delay.
Answer the call and don't delay.
Nothing can take us, no one can make us. We're before we're done. One for all and all for one. For all and all for one. For all and all. For one! Sure, take a bow. Take a bow. Thank you.
So the horror music on April twenty-fifth will be our spring concert. So please come, those of you that have been to our concerts in the past. Ms. Doll does just a wonderful job, year in, year out. A lot of great memories on some of the pictures that she put up there. Just some wonderful performances.
And we're a little out of the box at this one, aren't we? Uh-huh. But it's all related to music, but really creative kiddos. It's been fun. Okay. Thank you, guys. All right, back at it here. Well, thank you. That was amazing to have. I know they've left already, but to the parents, that's amazing to bring in their children and present their musical talents for us. I think that's such a great opportunity for, you know, for us and, you know, really to share with the community. I love it.
Basically, I like our schools.
Yes.
A lot of our central cities involve, we have some who've been a part of the dances. She gets shot me up there.
I did.
I did, I saw that. I was wondering if that was you. Well, and also, you know, speaking of music.
So the pressure's on, huh?
Right.
Oh, there is no pressure.
No pressure, yeah.
But it's really amazing when you can turn on music and we have a hundred and seventy kids that know exactly what we're gonna ask. Any collaboration that she has with Dave Austin, if I have to do a lot of that, remind you, it's with Nancy.
And it's fun to see, you know, them at this age. And then, you know, on Saturday night for the Jeep Jazz Dinner and the spaghetti dinner fundraiser, and to see the jazz band, then the older adults even, you know, just to kind of see the whole progression. It's kind of neat to really see the music, because it sticks around. An eighty-nine-year-old was in that band that was there. Well, he wasn't there that night, but it's amazing to think that there was somebody that old, so. All right, moving on. So, Board President, I just want to state thank you to the community, to the admin staff, to Jordan. Thank you for the referendum work. It passed. The community appreciates the work that we're doing, clearly, especially passing at that percentage. I think that really speaks to what we're doing here, what we're doing as a community, what we're doing for the admin team. So thank you for all of the work that you guys have put in. It's truly appreciated and it's truly showing up. Thank you. The other thing, just congratulations to Barb and Mike for your next term.
Me and Mike.
Yeah. You're a florist.
You'll leave the writing for like one thousand one hundred votes, so.
That's all I wanted to say, so thank you, guys. Jordan and Edman.
Mr. Moore, why don't you get us started?
So first things first, we added a kindergarten last week to our enrollment, which is great. So that again brings us up by one more from last meeting, which is fantastic. The only really event I can think of right now is the Torino Grill next week. Or no, Thursday, I'm sorry, man, I'm myself. So that's happening.
Ironic timing with the snowstorm. And it just snowed. It's not a fire drill.
We did that already since the apocalypse. Yeah. And then I just, I thought I would highlight kind of our work with our simple that we're doing. So you'll see the four grade levels' goals listed there. All of those goals based around phonics and phonemic awareness. The summer, when we talked about what we wanted to do, we figured that was a good goal, since we're a primary school. Every grade level's working on that in some form, so it just kind of made sense. And it was a natural goal for us to set for ourselves to improve that. And so then, under that, some ways we've been striving to meet these goals. And so the first thing, we've had some pretty intentional instruction towards those skills, whether it be smoker or whole group. We've really made a point to do that based on our conversation with Ed and Elizabeth from Seize it Two and kind of some research we've done. The next for that, the second staff meeting that we have at our school of the month, we make sure we have some time where we talk about some strategies that teachers are using to teach these skills to kids, and we'll share those out in the whole group and just stick with our focus there and make sure we're sharing those practices with each other. Because some good things are happening, but others may not know about it unless we talk about it. So we're making sure we do that. Jennifer Sullivan, who's a long-term sub for one of our special ed teachers, has actually, she had a little bit of time in the mornings, so she said, hey, I've got this phonics curriculum I did when I was teaching. Do you think the teacher could care if I went into it? Nope, not at all. So for kindergarten, first she goes in for five minutes every day and does the, it's called the Henry phonemic awareness curriculum. And so she's just doing that with each class for about five minutes, then she goes to the next. And so we're just kind of getting an extra boost of that. And then looking into next year, we're hoping that we can do a book study based on phonics and phonemic awareness by the name of Willie Leathers, who's like the best normal phonics and phonemic awareness person out there, really. So we're hoping to fill that right. I love him, he's good.
Do you want to come in?
I don't know. Why not? I like it.
Locks the curriculum, Eric. Oh, never mind.
But so that's just looking ahead, kind of how we're continuing that work in the building. We had our literacy night last month, so it came really a lot of fun. We had around a hundred books in our school, and listed the activities down there to see what those were all about. So we're already looking ahead to next fall to do a family math night of some type. And then probably a literacy in the spring, and just kind of have something in the fall too. Around mathematics would be kind of fun. So we're kind of working on that, getting that rolling. And then the next, like, four pages of this document is all the assessments that are happening. It's starting tomorrow, we're just gonna go for it. So a lot going on, busy timing here, but it's all good, and it'll be done before we know it. So we just forward ahead. So any questions or anything for me?
Jennifer Sullivan is the wife of Martha Sullivan, who will be hired as a musical science teacher this year. Located to our community. I happened to be with Scott the other day when we were popping in and out of rooms, and she was in one of our first grade classrooms.
Yeah.
It was just, now I know.
She's a part of kindergarten, isn't she?
Yeah. Yeah, for several years. She did all sorts of grades, and she's, she's.
Yeah.
She subs for us. Yeah, 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 and all levels. Yeah, they've done really well. Yeah. She really has.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Tails?
Started with enrollment, same family. Scott added a first grader, he said, I think. We had a third grader and a fifth grader this past week coming off summer break, so a couple of new students. Actually, they're returning to campus, so we haven't passed them. So, you know, essentially. April, busy month. Highlight for us really, started Tuesday after spring break. We've got one school, one book. I think this is our fourth year doing this. But it's an activity where all the students in the school read the same book. We get our kickoff on April second. The title of the book this year is "A Boy Called Bad". Wonderful book. It's about a young boy who's on the autism spectrum. And we have activities planned throughout the month. If you have a student that pays for school, you, if a student receives a packet like this, in a Ziploc bag, and there's, literally it's outlined, what chapters the families are reading each night, some activities in it. And we do trivia questions each morning on the announcements. Kids really enjoy it. And it's just a, it's fun to watch their faces, and particularly this year, the anticipation of when we open the chest to see the books. You could just feel the excitement. Finally, it's here. So that goes throughout the month, and really, we close it all off with the literacy night, which is scheduled for April twenty-third. So that'll be a busy week for us. We have literacy night on Tuesday night, the twenty-third, and then the concert on the twenty-fifth. So in between there, we have forward testing starting tomorrow. So things happen in that people. Any questions for me?
Thank you, sir. I'll just jump right in. Got a couple items to highlight from the bi-weekly meeting list. A lot of items here, because our March meeting was moved up for our referendum presentation, so a lot of things I'd like to have. Technology Committee, just an update on that, because we've had a little bit of a conversation at the board level, kind of regarding the direction and where things are going with regards to technology. So we took that feedback in earnest and have worked to put together basically a three-year plan for the updating implementation of kind of expansion of devices and what that looks like for the staff members returning and developing. We have some refining or final touches to add to that, but really feel like it helps kind of set the stage and give us some direction and kind of here to hear the goals we think we're trying to accomplish and what it is that we're trying to put in the hands of kids and teachers to make sure that they have those opportunities. So that, I think that's really been a big step forward for that group. I actually went up to Scott and Dan to kind of explain, understand, and forgive where we're at with respect to that, and then our future plans for the tech in greater position. So right now, you know, their two roles are, I would say, quite similar in expectations and just what is being done. And leading into next year, one role will remain very similar, but the other role is gonna look much different in supporting the integration of technology and getting the classroom of teachers. So we're working through that process right now. But I do like the direction we're going in. Excited, staff are asking for it. We know administratively, we need to kind of provide that support. And I feel like we're to have the FTE, it's just re-envisioning what the FTE can do. Excited about those opportunities. On a personal level, my spring break week was a busy one, but a good one. I did get my proposal approved from the district issue, so I have three chapters that are okay. Now I can get to write two more, that's a privilege. So. Yes. But I was excited, and it was nice to check that out for this. And then actually, the next day, I was at UW's Stevens Point. There was a conference on Friday of the week about leadership and branding, which I thought were connected to, obviously, some things we're trying to do in the district as well. So I will then connect the branding conversation to last Friday. I had Erica Peterson, who works as a consultant. Hello?
Hi.
Yeah, we have a member retired.
You may.
Okay, so pretty much the reason that we're here is because we wanted to thank.
Okay, so pretty much the reason that we're here is because we wanted to thank the entire school board for your support this season because it's been an amazing start and we couldn't have done it without all of you guys throughout it all. And on the base of our net, that allows us to get a lot more games in. And while soccer and track are both going on, which you guys all know is huge for us, more games equals more better seating opportunities, so thank you for that, too.
What was the final score?
Eight to one. Eight to one.
Eight to one, congratulations. Branding. This plan that.
Uh, Eric Peterson, who's a consultant that works for CISA Five. He's done some video of consistency in the district in the past with the endowment committee. Uh, was in the district last Friday. We had him get some video and do some interviews. Producing, are gonna be producing, uh, video that we'd like to show at the future search. And we think it's just kind of, uh, an update and just good promotional branding type information for our district. But three things really stuck out, um, relationships, has a family feel, opportunities for students, and high levels of collaboration. And those were things that came from students, parents, faculty members. And Eric, who was thirty-two years, I believe, as a teacher, has returned for a few years now and is working for CISA. As we were traveling around in the morning, we made a comment to him at one point. He's like, you know, I consult now, I can do a lot of schools. I was a teacher and my wife's still a teacher. He said, the feel, you can just feel it and it's really positive and people are really happy. So, for what it's worth, he doesn't know most of us, he knows Dale because they were colleagues once upon a time in the CISA. With the exception of that, it was all people that he had never met before from a wide cross-section, from a second grader to a junior, to parents, to faculty members. And that was his takeaway from Four Hours in Our District. So, to the branding piece, um, what is the story that we need to tell? What can we do better in our view than others can do with relationships, with student opportunity, with this collaboration? Because that's what makes us unique and makes us special. So, that'll be the story that we continue to try to tell and to demonstrate in the work that we do. But it was cool that that came out, um, in that setting. And like I said, someone that has no connection to the district whatsoever walked away from Four Hours in our district and was like, oh, pretty cool. So, that was neat. Um, a couple, well, one less exciting update. The second one's probably more exciting. One less exciting update. Um, transportation RFP, that whole process is still working. Um, I'm still working with both groups, trying to, uh, negotiate what I believe to be a fair price. I still am hoping to have a contract for you to approve at the next board meeting, so like two weeks. Um, but we'll see. I contacted both companies at the end of last week and just kind of said, here's what I believe is, is reasonable. And we'll see where it goes, but that's ongoing, so I did want you to think like that was stalled and not, uh, not in motion. And I'm still hoping we can bring something to the next board meeting. And then, yes, the, the final and the most important piece of just the referendum success. And go back and double-check, um, to make sure that this wasn't, um, was it false news, fake news? So it's neither, um, real news. Um, the sixty-nine percent yes vote was the highest percentage that we've had in history, since it's been approved in 'oh nine. The last one was sixty-six and I think then the previous sixty-six, sixty-seven, right around there is the previous high. I think the, um, you know, the adjustment, I clearly did not damn beat outcome of the referendum. And I think our communication, our consistency with our communication played a large part in the fact that we had the highest approval that we've ever had. And turnout was actually quite high as well. In comparison, I think since two thousand and eleven, London, it was the highest turnout. So a lot of people were excited about the Supreme Court seat or something else, but...
They were, and they were excited about it.
Sent for us to go with that. But yes, to have over eighteen hundred people in the district and a sixty-nine percent approval of yes. I looked, we had the highest, we had the highest yes vote that I saw anywhere. So, as I've talked about, if you could poll people on the streets on just about anything in society and you get seven out of ten to say the same answer, it'd be hard for us to get that on just hope anything. Whichever way you vote politically. So, who else to the board and the district? And as I told, some of our staff members, uh, that doesn't happen without, which is kind of from every person on board moving in the same direction. So, a lot of good stuff going on right now, it's exciting. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, um, you did have the meet and confer employee relations thing, sorry.
Hello, April third. Um, we had, so I'm on, I'm on the committee, Gary's on the committee, Cindy's on the committee, but Mike also came and heard that.
And Gary.
Yeah, fine.
Oh, sorry.
So, and we just told them, you know, the, the extra board members can come, it, you know, I feel it's important to them and it's always nice to have them here. There weren't any major concerns that were brought up. Uh, there was some minor stuff that we, that we wrote down and we'll certainly take a look at them. But for the most part, they just appreciated the opportunity to, to be able to, to talk to us. I guess the only heavy on the major importance was, uh, in Black Earth, they were concerned about the breath leaking. They said it does come in some of the classrooms and so they decided we could look into that. It is a little bit of a distraction at times and we said, you know, we certainly know it's an issue. And, you know, we, we would prefer a reasonable solution rather than, you know, a multi-hour-long project, but unfortunately then maybe they'll be the way to go. So, we'll have to see. It's an ongoing thing. But, yeah, we did get some feedback after the meeting too about them thanking us for the opportunity. So that was appreciated as well. And it was, it was good, it was good overall.
Yeah, we agree and I think that the summary that I kind of said that might as well is the fact that provide this opportunity, advertise the opportunity, can, um, for the most part, the feedback that we got, number one was all framed in a very pro, let's work together sense, which is helpful and nice. And then the other piece was there were not, you know, major concerns around language and handbook or contracts or things like that, which I think given the work that we've done in the last year is very encouraging as well. But a year later, um, we didn't have a bunch of people show up and say they're unhappy with what's going on with regard to that. So, it was a very positive meeting.
So, I guess, under the being I told, um, if you have anything that you can think of that would make your workplace a better environment, please make sure you go to your building supervisor and ask. We want that line of communication to be formally settled. All right, that's all.
That's good, good update. All right, and then also within the public content, there is information about the employee handbook changes that are looking to be formally done, um, and will it take effect on July first? Really, I do agree with you stating that it's really editorial, um, talking about co-curricular positions, the stipends, um, the years of service incentive pay. And, um, the language would be added to provide a stipend for teachers, um, if they retire, if they notify to retire prior to March first, so. And then we still are, that, I think we're still kind of looking into that, understanding whether or not the requirement to exhaust all paid time prior to a staff leave goes into effect. Probably still some work with understanding that process.
So as of now, um, we haven't made a, I'd say, a formal decision on that, but the inclination is to try to draft language that would allow that. After consulting with our benefits agency, there is not, there are, is not implication in regards to that or no way or anything really. So if we would like to do that, that's kind of local control. After investigating it pretty early, I'd say financially, not really implications for the district. It's more the employee, um, making the decision, do they want to potentially take that unpaid time on the front end or the back end? And if, you know, as I've come to think of it, empowering them and giving them a choice, something that they appreciate and that they want, at this point, I don't have a reason from a district standpoint to say that it's bad because I don't see financial implications for us and it's legally okay. So, the finessing is what does that language look like? So whatever it is that we put in there, it's sound.
Well, I think like, and we talked about during the employee relation meeting was, you know, someone going on maternity leave, they use up, they have to use up all of their time before they go on a, or during their FMLA, then they come back with a sick child or needs to, you know, go for their checkups. They then have no time at all to use. So I think allowing them to have that choice, I think is, it's a nice option.
Yeah, so like I said, that's, that's where I feel it's going. It's just a matter of what exactly that language is gonna look like. Because I mean, there will have to be some sort of number of days or whatever to, to govern that process, just so it's not wide open.
All right. Um, so then, just a note for, um, April twenty-second, we do have a PR committee at five-thirty. Representative Concedine. Thank you. Will be joining us, um, just to kind of talk to the school board, whoever wants to show up. Certainly the committee will be there, um, but it's open. It's sort of be a really, kind of a neat event, they reached out to ask to come to us. So that will be on April twenty-second, prior to the regular board meeting. Then, drumroll, it's been one year already, I can't believe, for the Vanguard Vision, the reaching new heights, our future search. Um, so that one-year meeting will be on April eighteenth, so.
Yeah, so a couple other just quick things to throw in with these upcoming meetings and dates. As of today, we're at fifty-seven RSVPs.
Wow.
Which is a pretty phenomenal turnout. Some of the other schools that we talked to said right around a half or slightly less than half is typically what you get in that one-year follow-up. We had about ninety-two last April, so fifty-seven, uh, pretty significant. That will be in here and yes, that's fairly a week away. Um, so that's coming quick. April twenty-second board meeting, just to kind of get your head, uh, ready and wrapped around. Um, board read organization, officer elections at that. Um, a few other kind of annual things we'll take care of, legal, banking, and, um, official newspaper. May thirteenth, meeting after that, contracts. So, all classifications, employees, contracts, probably with the exception of administration, we approve on the thirteenth quarterly. So, tonight was the, um, board meeting light in anticipation of board meeting heavy the next two weeks. It will be full agendas with many items and we have a future search next week as well.
Representative Concedine will be in the district office? Is that what we're meeting?
For now, I have it posted for here, um, just in case people want to show up. Whenever I thought if someone saw it in the agenda or saw it on the website and wanted to come, they might have a hard time coming to the district office and for sure.
And it's very small.
Yeah.
You know, there will be a lot of employees that want to come.
You never know.
Sweet.
Awesome. All right. Any other committee meetings aside than of what we've already talked about? Crickets, I'll take it as a no. I will then take your motion to adjourn. James, Mike, thanks. Uh, Mike?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
My Beth?
Yes.
I'll say yes. Thank you.